Substance use disorder and addiction is so isolating. And so as a black woman in recovery, hope must be loud. It grows louder when you ask for help and you're vulnerable. It is the thread that lets you know that no matter what happens, you will be okay.
Food isn't just fuel to live, it's fuel to grow. My family relied on public assistance to help provide meals for us. These meals fueled my involvement in theater and the arts as a child, which fostered my love for acting. The Feeding America network of food banks helps millions of people put food on the table. When people are fed, futures are nourished. Join the movement to end hunger and together we can open endless possibilities for people to thrive.
It's 5 o'clock. I'll call the Village Board of Oregon to order from Monday, June 16th, 2025. Yes, quick call roll, please.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Knipfer.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here. Thank you. Item 3, approval of June 2nd, 2025, Village Board, many minutes if correct and correct some mistakes, if any. Jason and I think Paige, I saw her name. Questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 4, public appearances, comments, communications, items for discussion and/or possible action. Public comment, as part of the agenda, House members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. 15 minutes will be provided for this item with a 3-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Do we have anyone here for public comments? Public comments? Hearing none. 4B, financials, 2024 financial statements audit and year-end 2024 budget amendment. One, presentation of independent auditors' report and communications from Johnson Block and Company and Corte regarding year-end 2024 financial statement audit. And we have Tara with us tonight.
Good evening, everyone.
Pull your mic up a little closer.
A little bit, okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. My name is Tara Bass, audit partner with Johnson Block and Company. I'm the partner in charge of the village's financial statement audit. So included in your packet, I believe, is a few drafts, draft copies of a few documents. You have our summary report, which I'll primarily go over, the draft of the audit report itself, that's the nice like 90-plus-page document, and then our standard communication packet. But I'll just, I'll focus on the financial statement overview that's included in your packet. So if you open that up, right there on page one gives you a brief content of the audit report. So quickly, I'll just kind of go through the different sections of the audit report since it is very lengthy, continues to get longer just with all the auditing and accounting standards and disclosures. But the first thing that's there after the table of contents is our independent auditor's report. So this is our work product as auditors. We are providing an opinion on the village's financial statements. So we issued a clean, unmodified opinion, which means we feel the financial statements are fairly stated and reported in accordance with all of the applicable accounting standards that the village should present their financial statements in. After the opinion letter, you'll have a couple sets of financial statements, your government-wide financial statements, which essentially consolidate all of your governmental funds and consolidate your utilities and show those as single-column financial statements. Then you have the fund financial statements, which are all of those different funds, the village has many funds, and provides those funds in individual detail, self-balancing funds for each of those, the general fund being the main operating fund for the village. After the financial statements, you have the footnote disclosures or notes to the financial statements. Really, the first several pages are standard accounting policies. They outline the governmental accounting standards that the village must follow to or report their financial statements in to be in accordance with the different accounting standards. Then there's several note disclosures that help support the financial statements, provide more narrative, give some more detail on the what goes into the financial statement line items themselves. Then after the notes, there's a couple sections, the required supplementary information and supplementary information. That includes the budget-to-actual schedules for the general fund and any of the major special revenue funds, schedules related to the village's participation in the Wisconsin retirement system and participation in the state life insurance, retiree life insurance program. Is the feedback really bad? Okay.
You're fine.
Okay. And then additionally, the supplementary information, that's primarily your additional village funds. So the village, as I mentioned, has several operating funds, and that's just how the village keeps track of all the different activities and operating areas. But that the smaller funds get accumulated in those back schedules as non-major governmental funds. Then additionally, on page 2, we also note we assist the village in compiling some of the regulatory reports that are submitted to agencies. So the water utility is required to submit an annual water utility report to the Public Service Commission. We gather statistical data and we use the financial information provided and assist the village in submitting that. Then the Department of Revenue Financial, annual financial report, Form C, the Department of Revenue uses that to calculate state aids, transportation aids, things like that. That's filed each year. The middle of this page, too, the required audit communications to the Village Board, that's a standard communication that we issue at the end of every audit. There is nothing particular in the communication to the Village of Oregon's report that's any different probably than past years. Usually, we have audit adjustments that we propose as part of preparing the financial statements, and those are pretty standard. We still consider when we come, it's a clean audit, even though we have adjustments, they're standard year-end closing, kind of the governmental accounting reporting journal entries or adjustments that we propose. So still considered a very clean and organized when we come here for the audit. And as I'll point out in some of the following pages, but just to kind of bullet point here, some of the key financial indicators when you're looking at the financial statements. You know, there's so many sections and so many numbers or line items in the financial statements, but when you're looking at them, some of the key, key points of emphasis, available fund balance, especially in your general fund, and I'll go into detail in the following pages, so I won't go into specifics here, but budget-to-actual comparisons, so the results of budget, your tax base, long-term debt in relation to your tax base, so your capacity to borrow, in the utilities, operating income and cash flow activity, and then, yeah, cash flow activity in the utilities. So if we do flip over to page 3, as I mentioned, the general fund is the main operating fund for the village, so this is a condensed version of that general fund balance sheet. So at the end of the year, your balance sheet consists primarily of cash, and then there's advanced tax collection cash, which you're collecting taxes in December for next year's operating budget, the taxes receivable for next year's operating budget, and then some other assets. Then you have liabilities and deferred inflows and fund balance. So what's left over after assets, liabilities, and deferred inflows is the village's general fund ending fund balance. So that's where we take a look at the middle of the page here, where we look at the breakdown of the different fund balance categories. So at the end of the year, the general fund had fund balance, a total fund balance of that 2.8 million, which consisted of a non-spendable portion, a small amount of committed fund balance, a small amount of assigned fund balance, and then unassigned fund balance. And that unassigned fund balance as a percent of your operating budget for next year is roughly that 33%. Now, under the village's fund balance policy, that's part of the other agenda item in this section is the budget amendment for the end of the year. That's the amendment provided by village staff to follow your fund balance policy and show a year-end transfer to one of the other funds, or sometimes it's split up between various funds, to use that excess fund balance and transfer it for specific purposes to other funds. And then doing so resulting in that ending fund balance percentage of around that 33%. So then also at the bottom of this page, just again, a condensed look at the general fund's results on a budget-to-actual comparison. So the original or amended budget anticipated a decrease in fund balance of around 50,000, and the actual results was an increase in fund balance of just under 230,000. Any questions so far there? Then page 4 is a more detailed version of those different fund balance categories specifically in the, specifically for the general fund, the breakdown of the non-spendable, committed, assigned, and then what's left over is unassigned fund balance for that 2.8 million in ending fund balance at the end of the year. Excuse the blank page, it's blank for when you look at it in book form, that's why. Paper, I know. But then here, page 5, what's labeled as page 5, is a look at the ending fund balances for the rest of those governmental funds. So all of your special revenue funds comparing the end of 2023 to 2024, the capital projects funds, the debt service fund, and then the small permanent fund. The one thing I wanted to point out here is the, the year-end transfer, I believe, was all transferred to the equipment replacement fund, correct? So that's down in your capital projects fund section. So that's where the year-end budget amendment transfer is reflected in that ending fund Now, the next several pages are just some additional information that provide some historical trends that help just kind of see where the village has come and where they're at now with both their tax base and their tax levy. So page 6 here takes a look at your property taxes over the last five years, split out between the village's property tax and then the tax incremental district, the tax increments levied against those tax districts. Then page 7, again, just another look at that tax role as a whole, noting that, you know, when you are the tax collection agency in December and January of each year, what you're collecting taxes for is the entire tax role, which includes the school district, the county, the technical school, including the village portion and the TIF district. So those, the makeup of the tax levy as a whole is broken out there. And then here, page 8, this is the analysis of the village's capacity to borrow, so your general obligation debt outstanding versus your capacity. So under state statute, municipalities can borrow up to 5% of the equalized value of the municipality. So your capacity to borrow general obligation debt is that 97.4 million, where your outstanding debt at the end of the year is 42, just over 42 million. So roughly, still have 56, 57% of your capacity to borrow. The next section is a look at the water and sewer utilities. So as I mentioned, in kind of those key financial factors or trends, is to look at both the operating results of the utilities and also the cash flow. So here, you know, there's a difference between operating and non-operating income. So when you look at the water utility, you have a net operating loss in 2024 and a net operating loss in the sewer utility in 2024. And whether or not that correlates with cash flow in and out can depend on some of the non-cash type transactions. You have depreciation expense, which is a large expense in the utilities, and that's the allocation of your capital costs over their estimated useful life. So that incorporates into that, that operating loss each year, that's a significant portion of your cap, or your expense during, in the utilities each year. And then when you look at utility cash flow, primarily, especially the last couple of years, the cash flow increase or decrease is related to capital. You've got cash flow increases in years where you've borrowed funds to finance capital projects, and then cash flow decreases for using up those, those borrowed funds for some of your capital. And in some instances, you used cash on hand, available funds to help finance those capital projects, so you'll see that decrease in the cash flow related to that. But still in this bottom section, utility cash balances by year, if you take a look at that as a percentage of your unrestricted available cash and compare that to your expenses and your, your operating expenses, it's a healthy percentage of what's available in Page 10 is just a graph view of those financial results specific to the operating income in each of those utilities. And then really, the next few pages, pages 11 and 12 are a look at the trends of the general fund's expenses over the last five years, broken down by the different functional categories, general government, public safety, public works, and so on, noting that debt service is also included in here, which can spike if there's refund, refunding and refinancing of debt, so that's kind of that anomaly there in this schedule. But like most municipalities, you know, public works, public safety, largest expenditure And again, this next, the pie charts, just a look comparing the previous two years in a pie chart view for those same general fund expenditures. Then the last two pages is the same graph and pie chart, but for the general fund revenues and broken down by the different revenue sources. Again, like most municipalities, your revenue sources primarily are taxes and state intergovernmental aids, those state shared revenue transportation aids. And taxes being roughly 63, 64% of the general fund's budget, budgeted revenue. And then the rest of the attachments are, again, that communication packet, I can go over that if there's any specific questions or answer any specific questions, and then the full audit report itself. But I will point it over to Lisa in case there's anything she wanted to add in terms of the numbers, since she takes very good care of them during the year, so.
Thank you, Tara. You did a very nice job explaining everything, so I really don't have anything to add. I don't know if anybody has any questions for either of us?
No? Don't see any. Okay, thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're looking for a entertaining motion to accept the auditor's report. Tim and Tom, discussion. Hearing none. Sorry, hearing none, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say thank you to Tara and to Lisa for keeping the books so nicely over the year. It's a lot of work going into this, so. Good job.
Okay, motion by Tim, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Item B2 is Resolution Number 25-16A, Resolution for Amendment Number 2 to the 2024 Village Budget to Account for Year End Adjustments, as just explained by Tara. Motion by Amanda. I think I saw Tim's hand go up. Questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 5, approval of vouchers in the amount of one man, $241,315.02. Motion to approve, Jason and Amanda. Questions, comments? Seeing none. So roll call vote.
Manke.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Knipfer.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item 6, consensus agenda. Items 6A through 6E, staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tom and Tim. Questions, comments? Tom?
Just to make a comment in relationship to B, 6BC and, excuse me, CD and E, BC and D, BC and D, yes. Just that these are topics we've talked about a lot in the past months, but it's indicating that we are going to be getting loans at 2.31% based on subsidies from the Clean Water Fund Program as well as the Safe Water Loan Program. And I, 2.3% is a big savings, I think everybody can appreciate, but I don't think what's always appreciated is how much work went into obtaining these loans and the rules that go into it and all the steps that we have, but I just want to note, commend staff for all the extra work in saving the village, this, what's going to be thousands and thousands of dollars.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Tom, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7, reports of committee's plan commission. One, an ordinance number 25-06, an ordinance to amend Section 17-405 Sub 4 of the Village of Oregon zoning coordinates regarding permitted intrusions and required yards and setbacks. I'm sure that you read every bit of that in the packet. Let's get a motion on the table for Jason and Tim. And, did you want to comment?
Sure, I can. To just summarize this as briefly as possible, this is an ordinance ensuring that our ordinance is consistent with an ordinance that we adopted last fall. So we did some changes to our fencing standards in the zoning ordinance, August, September of last year, and we identified that there is one spot in the zoning ordinance that is inconsistent with those changes, so we are making a change to ensure that it's consistent throughout.
Questions? Hearing none. Okay, motion by J, Jason, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 2, excuse me, ordinance number 25-07, an ordinance to amend Chapter 41 floodplain zoning of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances incorporating mandated updates to Federal Emergency Management Agency flood insurance rate maps and the flood insurance study for Dane County, and further changes to align all definitions, floodplain district regulations, non-conforming use provisions, and administrative procedures with the current Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources model, floodplain ordinance, and a minimum standards of Wisconsin Administrative Code, Chapter NR 116. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Amanda and Paige. This is essentially an update to our ordinance to meet federal regulations, Dane County, et cetera, et cetera. Questions? Seeing none. Motion by Amanda, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And 3, Resolution Number 25-17A, Resolution approving a certified survey map for a lot line adjustment for a property located at 1080, 1082, Tundra Avenue, lots 42 and 43 of the Greenview Preserve. Commission staff recommendation, motion to approve. Jason and Amanda, this looks like a basically lot line adjustment to make sure that it's within the village setbacks. Questions? Hearing none. Hearing none. We have a motion by Jason, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, 7B, Park Board, one, proposal from Oregon Rotary Club for Lerner Conservation Park signage improvements. Again, this was covered pretty extensively in the packet. Martin might have a word.
Yeah, so the Rotary is putting forward some signage to install within Lerner Park, and you can find that stuff in the packet there. Park Board reviewed this and recommended its approval, as far as I understand. And so it's coming before you to grant final approval.
And the Park Board did indeed recommend that. Looking for a motion, please. Tim and Amanda, questions, comments? Lynn, please.
I just wanted to comment that we got to actually hold the material that the signs are going to be. They're really high-quality aluminum, I think, is the material. They're graffiti-proof, which is really interesting to me, and they're very well-thought-out. They also, Rotary has figured out the financing on this within their organization, so there isn't currently a financial need from the village on this. And the other piece that's really awesome about the way that they are going about this is, we have currently, or just recently had a student from UW-Madison doing a study on this area, and she actually gave her final presentation to the Park Board that will be coming to the Village Board soon, and has designed some new ideas for this. The signage, though, that they are proposing will flex to some of the proposals that Morgan has. So it, should we move forward with some of those things, this signage will still work within that plan. They were very excited about Morgan's work and wanted to make sure that these signs wouldn't become expired essentially in information very quickly. So it should be able to live on depending on what we choose to do within the park.
Thank you. Jason?
I just want to thank the Rotary Club for their hard work on this and their historic work with Lerner Park and ongoing work. As a former Rotary Club member, I wasn't one of the ones who'd ever worked on Lerner Conservation Park, but they've got a lot of dedicated members who put in a lot of effort to keeping up the space and doing it well on behalf of the community, so just wanted to thank the club for their work on that.
Thank you, well said. Okay, further discussion. Motion by Tim, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 8. Polls, motion carries. Item eight. Unfinished business, uncertain discussion and/or possible action. A, review bids for twenty-twenty-five Hillview Heights Stormwater Improvements Project. Consider awarding the contract for the base bid to SNL Underground in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Staff recommendation, motion to approve the contract for twenty-twenty-five Hillview Heights Stormwater Project to SNL in the amount of, yeah, well, et cetera. Motion, Amanda and Tom. I think this is pretty straightforward. Questions? Or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls, motion carries. Eight B, review draft library impact needs assessment and park impact fee on land dedication policy needs assessment and related proposed ordinances amending Village Code, Section three point one one impact fees and Section eighteen point oh five land division. Staff recommendation, motion to direct staff to proceed with initiating the adoption process. Amanda and Jason, questions, discussion? Anyone? Okay. We have a motion by Amanda, second by Jason. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls, motion carries. Item eight C. Twenty-twenty-six budget planning or organizational strategic planning in consideration and potential action on Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty, a resolution establishing directives for the twenty-twenty-six Village Budget Process and amending the budget schedule. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Let's get a motion on the table. Tim and Tom? Tom and Martin?
So I have a presentation for this, but the way things are going, maybe we don't need one. All right, so I put together a, an actual presentation, just like how we did at the May twentieth special board meeting in relation to some of these conversations that we've been having. So there we go. Perfect. Perfect. So. I had a pretty lengthy memo in the packet, some other pieces of documents in there supporting the memo. And so we view that as the, sort of the in-depth analysis that supports all of this, and I'll kind of cover just broadly what it goes into detail within the memo. So, number one, revisiting the conversation we had from the May twentieth special board meeting, just recapping that discussion and sort of the core challenges that we discussed and sort of the relationship of those challenges. But as you can see here, again, we're talking about the financial and operational strain, demands for services, and the limitations on revenue options. Of course, the failure of the referendum in April and what that means from a community context. And then continuing, sort of in the way that we are, without trying to proactively address these things, it comes with some risks, and I think we all want to avoid some of those risks. So in terms of the May twentieth meeting, I think there was some really good shared consensus, some good understanding from the board members. And so this slide here kind of highlights three big areas that I gathered from this. You know, number one, we talked about, do we want to return to a short-term referendum? The general consensus that was heard was no, you know, that doesn't make sense in the immediate future, at least. I think there was one comment about, you know, the earliest feasible time would be twenty-twenty-eight. So that's really good. Consensus is really good direction and really good understanding from the board for how we can kind of move forward from, in what options we have. The, in terms of the twenty-twenty-six budget, there was a really good agreement from board members on how this process might unfold in terms of prioritizing essential services, trying to find efficiencies, optimizing staff time. There's recognition that we likely need to consider potential service reductions or eliminations where necessary or possible. And then we also talked about the longer-term strategic planning, and the board seemed to recognize the importance of that effort. But I also agreed that I need to spend some time discussing what that exactly means and defining what it should involve and how the village should pursue it. So all these things were, to me, really helpful in terms of sort of the, you know, I kind of keep coming back to a comment that Tom had, I think in April, one of the April meetings, about, you know, when we look at some of these issues, you all kind of look at me like, what should we do? And then I look back at you like, well, you need to give me some direction. And then there's sort of this feedback loop that happens. So to me, this is exactly, you know, how this should kind of work or ideally work, where you all have had some deliberations and some discussions, and now you kind of think, well, how do we operationalize this? And so that's where I can come in and be, and kind of give that guidance and give that advice. So to me, this was all very helpful. And so the memo in the packet and this presentation speaks to sort of maybe some ideas where we can go from here. So I guess the primary, look at this image I created on ChatGPT. This is fantastic. I just gave it the slide and it produced this. So, yeah, but this was the best one it made, so it's all downhill from here. And the more you look at it, the more less sense it makes, but it looks kind of good.
So look away.
Yeah. So I guess the, kind of the first decision point here that came to my mind, and just based on what I heard and board's discussions, was, you know, we have this twenty-twenty-six budget that's kind of bearing down on us, and then we're talking about this long-term strategic planning. And I think at this point, in my opinion, we need to sort of separate these two. The twenty-six budget is in front of us. It's, it needs to be an immediate focus. And the long-term strategic planning, we need some time to talk about that a little bit more. And just the timing of the budget process is just, in my opinion, isn't going to align in a good way with that. And so, you know, speaking to kind of how I came to that, that recommendation, you know, number one, strategic planning should be a demanding process, right? And we shouldn't rush it. We shouldn't align it with this immediate sort of operational need that we have with the budget process. We would, I would assume we would want to do some level of analysis, some level of public engagement, some level of data evaluation. And the timing is just not, it's just going to be impractical for what we need to do for the twenty-six budget, because that process is already in progress. That capital planning portion of that is already happening. Today was the deadline for departments to get their capital submissions to Lisa and I. So things are already happening, and we really need a budget document that's ready to be approved within the next four months to meet our statutory deadlines. So that really doesn't give us good time to develop any kind of meaningful strategic plan. And so, you know, my recommendation here, in addition to sort of splitting these things off, is to, you know, we can run and we can walk at the same time on these things. So we'll talk about the twenty-six budget process, but I do think, you know, let's keep that conversation going on the strategic planning process as well. My proposal is to target that August fourth Village Board meeting for continuing that discussion. So I guess I'll just pause here and ask the board for any input, because if there's not an agreement on that recommendation, then the rest of the presentation is kind of null and void. So I want to hear some feedback on this part.
Tom?
I guess I'd like to speak to the, specifically the idea of breaking out the strategic planning and spending more time on it. I think during our discussions, one of the things that was mentioned is the Village Board tends to be a pretty fluid organization. People are coming and going on a fairly regular basis. And just seeing the numbers of people that Martin's had to work with in the last few years is evidence of a regular turnover in that process. At the same time, and the difficulty of setting plans for people who aren't here yet. And at the same time, I've looked at some other governmental entities recently, specifically the Oregon School District, who's had a strategic plan in place for years, has had substantial turnover in their board, and yet they have a very detailed and, and you would see it every, every letterhead and every document that they produce, there's always that little logo in the bottom of their strategic plan and the components of their strategic plan, and it's fundamental to everything they do. They make modifications with it over time, but it is certainly within us, our role to establish that base. And yes, it will be modified down the road by future board members and future groups, but it's certainly practical for us to actually take that on, and I think it's a meaningful activity. And important enough that we spend a lot of time on it.
Anybody else? Tim, and Lynn?
Yeah, so the idea of splitting these two conversations, I a hundred percent support. I was hoping if you could elaborate a little bit on, in your memo, you talked about maintaining process integrity and seemed to be kind of setting some expectations for us in this. And I wonder if you can kind of elaborate on that, because I feel like I'm trying to read between the lines a little bit.
Yeah.
I'd rather be just more expressive.
No, I have some slides on that, so. A few slides. No, well, yeah, I'll get to it.
Okay, that's fine.
Lynn?
When we say long-term strategic planning, and maybe this is for August fourth, maybe I'm getting myself ahead of myself here, what do we mean by long term?
That's a discussion to be had.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess you can go to the next stage.
All right, so I guess, so making that decision, you know, my thought process in terms of the twenty-six budget process is how do we make this happen the way we want it to happen, right? That's kind of how I thought about crafting this and crafting my recommendations. And so it really came down to sort of four things. Number one, we need a tool, an instrument to create action. We do that all the time, through resolutions, through ordinances, motions. Those are instruments that create action. So we need to do something that does that. And so that instrument needs to incorporate strategy, you know, in term, and for me, my thoughts went to the May twentieth meeting and sort of those outcomes that we talked about. And then we also need to incorporate instructions. So myself, staff, others have good, clear instructions on how to do this. And then we have to have specific actions or tasks that need to be incorporated into it so that we know how to proceed through it. Not a bad image there, kind of interesting. So this one's a little duller. Not as visually interesting. So in terms of the actual tool, the instrument here, my recommendation would be to use a resolution. We did this last year for the twenty-five budget process, and we had some good instructions and actions and strategies within that resolution that helped that process. And so my advice would be to do that again this year, and the recommended resolution is in the packet. And so I'll spend a little bit of time going through that. But, you know, generally, the written adopted resolution, you know, incorporates those strategies, those instructions. So as I said, translating those things from the May twentieth meeting, translating them to official direction so that it's written and there for everybody to see and understand. It then creates this process, and then again, gives that clear guidance and gives those specific actions. So in terms of, you know, the overall strategy, as I mentioned, we want to follow those four things that came out of the May twentieth meeting, and that is acknowledging these current realities. So we need to understand that this budget needs to be developed with an understanding of these operational capacity challenges, the financial context, the feedback we got from the referendum. You know, the staff and others, we can't be putting budgets forward that doesn't recognize this. We can't put our head in the sand and just ignore them. We have to craft our budgets with this understanding. We also have to craft it with the understanding that there might, there will be no referendum before twenty-twenty-eight at a minimum, at least within this direction. And I think that's important because we want to think in terms of longer-term strategy as well and other things that we can be doing within this budget that sort of set us up in a good way for trying to go for referendum in the future. Incorporating those focused priorities that the board talked about at the May twentieth meeting. We need to prioritize our critical needs, kind of make sure we're being efficient with staff time. And then making sure that this is a process and a path towards difficult choices and respecting that this will may end up in a place where we have to make difficult choices. And so making sure that this resolution and what's in it creates responsible, well-informed, based on data, things that we will proceed through over the next few months that get us to a point where we're not making arbitrary decisions. We've thought about this in a very logical way, and we've collected information and data in a logical way that support these things. So one of the things that my mind went to in terms of strategy and instructions for this resolution, number one, if we're separating the strategic plan process out, that won't be there necessarily for us to rely on. But we do have other policies and other plans that we've adopted, that we've agreed on, that are in place that can serve as sort of guideposts for giving more instruction on this process. So the number one thing that went to my mind was we do have a financial policy, Financial Management Policies Handbook. And so it's a very comprehensive handbook of financial policies. It was adopted in twenty-twenty-three, so it's still very relevant, and it covers a lot of the things that we're talking about as far, as far as the budget and all of these challenges are concerned. So the resolution that's proposed incorporates a number of those things. So number one, you know, achieving a structurally balanced budget. You know, we do that every year, but it's good to be, have a reminder in there. But, you know, number one, we got to make sure our ongoing revenues must be planned to cover ongoing expenses. We need to maintain our minimum reserves. We need to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we're using our reserves for operating or recurring costs. When we estimate revenues, we want to make sure that we're being conservative but reasonable. We're not using one-time revenues to be used for anything other than one-time expenses. We want to make sure that we're critically examining all spending. And so directing staff to critically examine past spending patterns to ensure value rather than simply adjusting previous allocations at the margins. So we want staff to think in terms of, you know, okay, this budget line item's been going up a thousand dollars every year for the last five years. I'm just going to put another thousand for this year. That might be okay, but don't think, they need to think a little bit more about it and be able to explain why that might be necessary. Prioritize services strategically. So, you know, again, this was something that was incorporated into last year's budget too, but we want to maintain our existing services. Those will be prioritized over new services. And one of these, the next one here, which is really important and not often done by governments, but we want to avoid across-the-board cuts. And that's a tactic that a lot of government agencies will use, you know, everybody cut three percent, everybody cut five percent. What that does is it just makes everything worse. Every service you have just gets worse. And I would guess that most people, including this board, would probably say, well, there's actually probably some things we don't want to get worse. And we are probably okay with prioritizing certain things over other things. And so this resolution codifies that and says, essentially, we're going to try to avoid that, and we're going to try to prioritize things. And rather than trying to maintain something that's dysfunctional or of poor quality and just keep making it more dysfunctional and more poor quality, we're going to say, no, maybe we need to just stop doing it. And then focus on efficiency, and it's been something talked about with the board in these conversations is, you know, the preferred strategy here to balancing the budget and addressing these issues is improve productivity, improve efficiency. Can we save time? Can we save time? Can we save, you know, staff from having to do certain things that will free up their time to do things that we feel are, are more important? The other thing that I thought in terms of this resolution is, you know, we're, we're spending a lot of time talking about operating, our operating capacity and those sorts of things. But lost in this is our capital plan, our capital projects. And it's gotten less focused because with capital projects, when we use debt for these things, that's very flexible, right? We have options there. And on the operating side, we don't. And so that's where we spend, spending a lot of time. But to my mind, we need to think about the capital plan as well because that takes into the context the feedback that we got from the referendum outcome and just overall community thought on affordability, property taxes, that sort of thing. Because the capital plan, even though it's primarily funded by debt, it still impacts people's property taxes. So, you know, as I mentioned before, today was the day that departments had their capital plan submissions due. So we have a little bit of a time crunch on this one. And July 21st is going to be the first day that the board reviews the capital plan proposal. So I'm proposing to add an extra step here within the next month or so. And that is to direct the administrator's position to critically evaluate the capital plan as it's been submitted. And so what this would look like to my mind is, okay, number one, what do things look like in terms of proposed spending and financial impact? We do that every year, but just making sure that that's in there. And then talking about sort of these next three things, you know, identifying projects that really align with our needs, including those adopted policies and plans that we have in place that can serve as guideposts. And then identifying projects that, you know, may need to have the board discuss it critically in terms of timing, scope, and necessity. And then also giving the board some options about, maybe we can phase some of these things in a different way. Maybe we can defer them in an effort to try to mitigate tax impacts. And so to my mind, you know, number one, creating this direction to, to do this extra work is one thing. But then when that work is given and produced, it needs to be of use and of value to the board. But it also needs to be done in a way that the board expects. And so adding another element to the resolution of making sure the village board is giving the administrator directions on how to make this report. And so included in there is, okay, when I go to do this report, I need to think about, you know, what is critical and what is urgent? Well, that could be different for, for anybody. But here we're saying what's critical and urgent is things that address public health and safety requirements, regulatory mandates are essential to the core village services. Those things are a priority. So when I do my assessment, I need to keep those things in mind for when I'm making those recommendations on the previous slide. And then the following criteria, taking into account funding sources, lifecycle costs, impact on debt, talking about the community affordability should be assessed. You know, what will these projects do in terms of annual costs for staffing and maintenance? Whether projects relieve or add to operational pressures? And then again, getting back to projects need to be consistent with adopted plans, policies, and ordinances. So tying it back to those guideposts again. On the operating side, the proposal here is to do a little bit more due diligence as far, as far as that process. So operating, budgetary operating worksheets will go out here at the beginning of July, like they normally do. But what I'm proposing is to add a little wrinkle to that and to do kind of a two-step evaluation. And the first one being a little bit more critical assessment by departments of their operation. So there's a worksheet that's been developed that's in the packet. And that's designed to get a little bit more direct input on the day-to-day operational challenges, the responsibilities of departments, and trying to generate some ideas for relief. And then a second step to that is, again, another administrator assessment of that information, which is intended to give some policy and budgetary recommendations to the board on the village's operations, but from a bit, a bit more of a broader village-wide perspective. So looking at departments, but then also looking at those functions that kind of fall outside of departments but impact the organization nonetheless. So departments will do their, their work here in July. And then in August, I'll create this assessment. And then that will be delivered to the board in September. And that will be used to inform, you know, what kind of the final budget, putting, putting together the final budget document that's delivered to the board in October like we do normally every year. So that operating worksheet that will be given to departments, it asks them to identify a few things that are relevant to what's going on here. We want them to list out what they see as their core functions. We want them to provide us with a, a list of, you know, what kind of challenges they're facing, the degree to which they're facing some of these pressures that we've talked about, having them identify some lower priority activities that are distracting them from their core responsibilities. And then asking them, what solutions do they have? What are things that we could consider to implement that will help improve efficiency and maybe save dollars? And then it also asks, what is the, what's the top priority for your department? What's the most meaningful operational item or position that would provide the greatest positive impact for their operations? So trying to generate some of those ideas and things that, as myself as the administrator, then you as the board can, can chew on and be, you know, better informed on just the operational realities going on in departments. And then again, you know, the administrator's assessment, you know, similar to the, the capital assessment, directing the administrator in this assessment, how are you going to look at this? What is the lenses that you're going to look at this so that what's getting put in front of you is something that you expect? And then the last piece of this is employee compensation. So this is a big element that I wanted to call out specifically in the resolution for operating. Employee compensation is by far the biggest expense that we have. And so the resolution does three things, directs, you know, some of the things that we talked about at the May 5th village board meeting when we had our compensation consultant here. So this directs setting the 2026 employee wage schedule at the 50th percentile. So this is setting it right at the median of similar jobs, similar communities, doing similar things. And so we're not trying to be above the, the market at all. We're not trying to be below the market. But we want to make sure that we're still in the mix. And so that kind of balances that competitive pay with, you know, still being fiscally responsible. It also directs the adoption of a new pay structure. So we talked about that in the May 5th meeting as well. So going from a 12-step wage schedule to a 16-step. And so the, the early part of the, the scale is, is shorter. It gets to people, employees up to that median pay as rapidly as we can manage it. But then once they get to that median pay, it, it ratchets down that growth of pay. So again, speaking to, we want to try to get employees to be within the market for their positions. But we want to control costs for people who might be there so that they don't rapidly get above that. And then the resolution also outlines that, you know, until we get a little bit farther in the budget process here and have a bit better understanding of what's possible and what's not possible, as far as the, as part of the administrative assessment for the operating side, we'd also recommend a funding allocation for employee compensation at that time. The resolution also has a, an amendment to the 26 budget schedule that we adopted earlier this year. So this resolution or this budget schedule amendment incorporates everything that we've talked about here. Make sure the board is giving clear direction at key, at each key phase of the process. So we're in June, we're setting the direction. July, capital review, getting that operational input. August, getting those budget submissions in. The administrator's review is ongoing internally. September, you get all that information, you start to review it. You start to get feedback. So then in October, when we get that actual budget line item out there, it's incorporating all of that feedback that we've taken on and gone through throughout this process. And in November, do the public hearing, do the final adoption, just as we normally would to meet all of our deadlines. So I have a couple of slides on Tim's point here. And so I had a section in the memo as, as far as recognizing sort of the people element of all of this, the politics element of all of this. So it's a vacuum. It's great to have all these processes, great to have all these directions. These exist on paper without emotion. But ultimately, there's people involved in all of this and understanding that, you know, when we're going to have difficult conversations, things that might create friction between board members, board to board members or boards, board members to administrator, administrator to staff, staff to staff. You know, we can't be naive to understand that people are going to be people in some of these situations and they're going to try to, to advocate for themselves. They're going to, you know, maybe try to go outside of the process or the bounds that we're trying to create in all of this. And so we need to, number one, kind of call that out in terms of some standards that I think we should all, whether it's as board members or as staff, should all recognize and try to keep in mind as we go through this process. So number one, you know, making sure that these discussions stay in public meetings, making sure everybody respects the boundaries of their own role, but also respects the boundaries of each other's role. And then also making sure that the board supports staff when unpopular ideas are put forward or, or discussed. And so making sure that the board retains that leadership, that ownership of, of everything that's happening within this process and, and your staff. And so I have a couple of slides with some scenarios. So I'm going to just read through these. So the first one, so keeping budget discussions in public meetings. So scenario here, library director concerned that the library's popular program will be scaled back due to budget cuts. Worried that the official budget submission documents, process alone, won't convey the program's importance. Director emails two village board members directly. Email contains heartfelt testimonial from parents and makes direct appeal to the board members to protect the program's funding. So when we're talking about this principle of keeping things in this meeting, the, the way to do that is these board members don't engage in this private debate about the program's merits. Instead, you can, you can reply, thank you for your passion for this program to ensure all departmental requests are considered fairly. It's essential that this information is included in your department's official budget submission to the village administrator. We as the board can only make decisions based on formal consolidated budget materials presented through that official channel. So why does this matter? So board members are upholding the integrity of the process. They're redirecting the department head back to the process, reinforcing that all requests must flow through the same channels. This prevents any single department from having unfair influence and ensures the board makes decisions based on comprehensive, transparent review of all village needs rather than on one who made the most persuasive private appeal. I think we can all understand that one. So, yeah.
Yeah, I've got questions.
Lynn, please, and Amanda.
So, um, thank you for the scenarios. That's really helpful. In this scenario, can we go back? Thank you. I, I like the process of it coming through one channel. But I do want to know how said library director could get that appeal to all of us. You know, i- if you're prioritizing some of those things for us and you're, and you're our channel, which is great. And, and by the way, I mean no disrespect to you in this question. How would we encourage said library director to get that information to us in a responsible way? Is there an appeal process? Is there like a public opportunity there?
So, you know, number one, you know, hopefully the formal process will, they should be able to submit that information through that process. Number one. But number two, it doesn't mean that they can't speak to it in, in the meeting.
Okay.
Provide, do it in a transparent way. Make sure that everybody can hear the same things and make sure everybody that has a fair opportunity to weigh all of that information against all of the other information that's being presented, right? And it also doesn't preclude, you know, board members from, you know, having a meeting with the department to get information, more information, to understand information more. It's just recognizing that, you know, this is how some of these things go sometimes, right? Where, you know, you start to get that advocacy and then people aren't hearing all the same things. Somebody who's following the rules suddenly is getting, you know, a little bit less than somebody who is maybe trying to work around those a little bit. So it's not saying that people can't be people, but it's saying, look, we need to recognize this is ways that people get a little too peoply. And we need to make sure that we respect that and recognize what we're trying to do here.
Amanda.
Yeah, I kind of want to elaborate a little bit more on that because, you know, in your, in the scenario that you have, sorry, in the scenario that you have, the, the director is emailing, you know, is emailing board members. And I see how that could be problematic. But, you know, as board members, we want to hear from the public. And so if the public is emailing us, you know, hearing us in these discussions and things, you know, I think it's advantageous for all board members to hear all the same feedback. So if you're getting an email from someone and you realize they haven't emailed all the board members, you know, that would be something maybe we could share or put in a packet or something like that. But if it's not coming from the director, I feel like, you know, I, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around this because we have the ultimate responsibility and we're always saying, we want to hear from the public. We want to hear from the public. Please tell us what your priorities are. And I don't want to discourage that in any way. I just want them to do it directly, the board members. Is that what I'm understanding? That's.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing in this that would say, I mean, you have an obligation to your constituents and your constituents can communicate with you. They're not necessarily, you know, we're trying to create an administrative process to make sure that we go through this in a, you know, transparent, efficient, effective, accountable way. You know, how, it doesn't necessarily dictate how constituents can communicate with you or how you want to, you want to communicate with constituents yourself. This is speaking to the organization, right? This is speaking to the process by which staff, administrator, and elected officials are going to work through this process and understand each other and what obligations everybody has.
Okay, thanks.
What else?
I should say, I didn't put any of this in the actual resolution itself because it, I mean, it's hard to capture this. So this is sort of an understanding, you know, speaking to an understanding between everybody that's involved here. So the second one, you know, again, everyone should respect the boundaries of their own role and each other's role. And this kind of gets to sort of a little bit of Lynn's question a little bit more. Scenario, Public Works Director's budget quest includes converting a part-time seasonal park position into a full-time. Director says it's essential to address staff overload and burnout to improve the quality and consistency of park maintenance year-round. Then the administrator's role, you have the organizational perspective, analyzing the request, the, this request in the context of the entire budget and the board's financial policies. Recognize that it's a valid issue, causing department staffing strain. But also know that creating a new permanent position adds significant occurring expense. So in the draft budget recommendation to the board, administrator does not include the new position. Instead, they propose one-time increase to seasonal temporary help budget, explaining it offers some short-term relief without committing the village to a long-term expense. Board's role is the policy decider. Village board reviews the department's request. So again, you're, you're getting the information from the department head. You're getting it just the same. It's not being filtered out. And you're also getting the administrator. And you're also getting the administrator's recommendation. So a board member states, "We understand the operational challenges. However, the administrator has correctly identified in the situation, this would go against our policy of achieving a balanced budget. Therefore, we accept the administrator's compromise and the policy decision is not to add permanent staff rest with the board." So this is kind of stratifying that the boundaries of responsibility. So why does that matter? Director correctly acted as an expert, identified an operational need, proposed a solution for the department. The administrator correctly acted as the chief administrative officer, analyzed the request against the village's overall financial health, made a recommendation. Board correctly acted as the final policymaking body, taking the input of both and making the decision. So that kind of speaks again to sort of Lynn's comments of getting the information from both and then making that decision. And so for the last one, last scenario, board must support staff when they propose unpopular ideas. So in the September 2nd meeting, village administrator presents the operational review. One of the findings is that eliminating a popular but non-essential community event would save $15,000 and frees up dozens of staff hours that could be reallocated to core services. During the public comment portion of a later meeting, several residents strongly criticized the administrator, claiming, "Doesn't care about our community traditions." So instead of remaining silent, board member speaks up. "I want to thank these residents for their comments and I want to be clear for the record. Board directed the administrator to identify every possible option to address our significant budget gap. He's done this job professionally, bringing us this idea. This is an unpopular idea and we knew some would be. Now the responsibility rests with us, the board, to take this staff recommendation, weigh it against your feedback and make the final difficult decision. Administrator has our support for bringing forward the candid information we asked for." Why this matters, by doing this, board member actively supports the staff member who's presenting an unpopular but necessary recommendation. This reinforces that staff should bring forward honest assessments without fear of reprisal, which ultimately gives the board the information it needs to make the best possible decision. So if we're in an environment where staff doesn't feel like it's going to be supported or protected for giving candid advice, you're not going to get it. I mean, that's just reality, that's just people. So the board needs to be the leader, needs to take ownership of this process. We are your staff, we are giving you recommendations that you have directed and then you need to protect that on the backside and own that on the backside. So next steps, you know, obviously here, I'm putting forward the recommendation of the resolution, which does all these things that we've talked about and what the motion is here to do. The recommended motion is to adopt the resolution and we would move forward with all of these actions and instructions as presented.
I would just make a point. I think Martin's scenarios are very informative, at least for me. And he talks about how staff might make a recommendation and then it's up to the village board. And it's important that that works both ways in that the administrator and/or staff may make a recommendation and it's not disrespectful for this board to not follow that recommendation. So that works both ways. I think, again, I think Martin makes very important points, but what it boils down to is we have to make the final decision. They can only make recommendations. Thank you. Anyone else? Tom?
I guess I would add that in the scenarios, you know, it was, we didn't cover a scenario where we disagreed with the administrator. And... But there will be choices.
Right.
And I think the idea here is to have the choices. And this is going to be a choice, it's going to be this program or that program. It's like 50% of each program, which the one scenario that we're trying to stay away from was where what we have and what we value begins to deteriorate. So I guess, you know, we need to be prepared to when that decision is made that it's like, well, that just came as a staff recommendation and then blow it off. We have to take ownership on that. I think that's the gist, that's the point. We may make it, find something that, you know, comes through as a staff recommendation to do something and we just say, "Can't do it, just can't." And so that's something we're going to have to take that ownership on. And I think that's where the scenarios were really helpful.
I think so. Amanda?
Yeah, I just want to say too that, you know, should it come to that where the board is hearing from staff, department head, and we end up going against it, that is in no way a reflection on what we think for your performance or anything like that. Like this is not, it's not about that. I think all of us up here completely, 100% respect all the department heads and the tough decisions that you have to make and the recommendations are important. But so if we go against that, just being very clear that this is not in any way saying that we don't trust what you're saying or anything like that, it's just, but that will, I think we can own those decisions when they happen.
Lynn?
So that was a lot of information and I want to just pull one piece that I want to learn more about, which is the worksheet. Is that what you referred to it as, where a department head needs to answer? Yeah, could you grab that slide for me? Where they talk about their goal for 2026, their organizational pressures. First of all, this feels like really helpful to me because I unfortunately do not have the time to sit down with all departments and get this information every single year, but yet this is the stuff that I really want to hear. And so I'm wondering if you could elaborate more about what this looks like for us as board members? Like, do we just get, we get to see the whole thing? And we use that when we make decisions? Do we ask question? How does this work in your mind in terms of how we best use this worksheet when it comes to making actual decisions?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm kind of in the same boat, sort of in my position as far as, I want this because I need to be better informed as well. So if I'm going to generate a report, making recommendations and suggestions to the board from my perspective, I need the perspective of the department heads to help inform mine. And so this is, you know, intended for that purpose, to get to kind of connect all of these dots here. And so in my mind, you know, September 2nd, you're going to get my report and then you're going to get all these worksheets with it. So I'm not going to filter anything that the departments give to me. You're going to get all of that in a package and then you can use that to inform your decisions, how you see fit.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Sorry. Anybody else? Okay. Is that Martin?
If you guys are...
There is a motion on the floor.
Yes, no, there's a motion on the floor to approve the resolution as presented. Motion by Tom and Tim. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I for one would find it helpful to maybe, if you could sound that presentation out.
Please.
Item nine, new business and for discussion and our possible action. A, request to replace a K-9 squad vehicle due to hail damage at a total cost of $78,400 utilizing $12,373 in insurance payout funds, $39,200 in K-9 funds, and 27, excuse me, $26,827 in available capital funds. Planned vehicle replacement is currently in 2026. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Jason and Amanda?
Jason and Amanda.
That was hedging. This was spelled out quite clearly. Chief, would you have additional?
Yeah, I'll just quickly summarize. In 2026, this was on our CIP to replace. How we pay for the K-9 squad is half is covered through donations or donation program and then the other half is covered by the village. We went through that real bad hailstorm, bumper to bumper, the thing now looks like a golf ball. We thought we could still limp it through till 2026, but unfortunately, it's now taken water damage because of the hail through the headlights and things like that. So and the amount of money it would cost to fix one headlight, which unfortunately we have to have the whole bumper removed, it just got worse and worse as we went. So we talked with the insurance company and, you know, to give you an example, right now we have one of our old Dodge Chargers, which is actually in pretty decent condition, given how old it is and how much mileage. We'll be lucky if we get five grand for it, it's closing, the auction's closing in a couple of days. This squad, hands down, is in far worse condition, not only externally, but it's been hauling around a hard-working K-9 for several years, so the smell is unique. It will not make good money in an auction. So I think that the village actually will significantly benefit by getting that payout of $12,373 and then that payout that the insurance company would give, the village would go then towards the village's side of that 50% for the squad purchase. So it's just a kind of a bonus, it'd be one we could tick off of the CIP and then also would come in at a cheaper cost. And luckily, we have a local dealership that has one on the lot, we can get it rolling ASAP.
Tom?
Just had one question, what was, do we know what we had in the capital plan for 2026? That amount was?
I just had that up. It takes a minute, mine doesn't run too fast here with...
You don't have that memorized. Neither do I.
Probably cost for the new $78,400.
It's like a two-minute delay. It's spinning wheelie on me. Sorry. If I can open it up a different way. Getting a spinning wheel again, I'm sorry. It's a Monday.
Computers are tired.
Next year for the squad replacement's $138.
I think, I thought that one...
What you just signed.
It might look different now because it adjusted. I already adjusted it. Would I, did it have it for the 2020, we had for the 2026 originally? No.
No.
All right. Yeah, originally I had $81,000. So that would be the one new regular squad and then half of a K-9 squad.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Jason, second by Amanda, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you to the fundraisers for the K-9s.
Yes.
Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants. This is for information only. A, village administrator report included in your packet. Questions? No. B, village and attorney consultant report. May 2025 monthly report on wastewater treatment plant project. Again, a good detailed report in the packet. And C, director of finance report, billing permits, impact fees and connection fees collected through May 2025, Lisa's here if you have a question or comment. Okay, item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events in miscellaneous business. Let's start with department heads or staff. Rachel, looks like you might have one.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Martin to bring up the, ooh, there's the calendar. There, there. It's the Canva product, isn't it lovely? It's colorful. Should be eye-catching. We're going to have our annual ice cream social and dinner too on Thursday, July 10th, from 4:30 to 7:00 at the senior center, the whole community is welcome. It'll be a good time with some local music from Heather and Dave, so we hope to see everybody there.
Great, thank you Rachel. Anybody else? Lisa?
Yes, so since we had the audit this evening, I just want to thank the staff, Sue, John, Amy and Peggy. It is a team effort to compile all the information that goes into that audit and it is very, very time-consuming, so there's a lot of time spent compiling all the information. So I just wanted to shout out to them.
Thank you and we do appreciate it. Okay. Board members, please.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't remind that we have Summerfest coming up this weekend and that it is a significant event within the community, it's something that's very important to the whole community. They have some big-name talent lined up for some of the different events, so.
Okay, did you have more?
Sure, but yes, as Tom mentioned, Summerfest is this weekend. Grounds open up on Friday night, so that would be a good night to come and explore. I've been getting a lot of questions about the wristbands. Saturday and Sunday are wristband days, noon to 5:00, $25 each for a wristband and there are no pre-sales, so they are all the day of. And then Sunday is the parade. It will be in combination with the car show, so they'll be peppered in there and we have the UW marching band. So not only do we have a marching band again, we've got like the premier, top-of-the-line marching band. So it should be great and we have a fabulous announcer for the parade as well.
Earl, Tom, Kurt, over, Amanda?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you know if the chamber is looking for more volunteers still?
Yes, they absolutely are. I actually just checked the sheet, they need help in the main tent. Some of the later, like bartending or check-in ID shifts, they still need. We can always use more help with the parade with, you know, merge captains and cleaning up after. And then also the softball fields need, they need volunteers, they need bartenders as well as people to help keep score and keep the fields maintained as well.
Jason?
Two announcements, first of all, thank you to everyone who came out to the public art fair this weekend. It was a fantastic event. I want to give kudos to the public art committee who really worked hard at putting it together and put in a lot of time on Saturday as well. I was able to stop by one of our local businesses and asked, hey, have you got more people to stop by because of the public art fair? And the owner said, actually, we've had a business increase and we've stayed open longer for, because people have been around for this event. So as we're looking for increasing commercial traffic, traffic downtown for our commercial businesses, it's a great event for that. Then, on another note, I'd like to take a moment to share that this will be my final meeting as a member of the village board. I have made the difficult decision to resign effective Tuesday, July, June 17th, excuse me. Over the past few months, it's become clear to me that I've overcommitted myself across my personal and professional responsibilities and I'm not able to give this role and the important work that we do here, the time and focus it deserves. And I believe our residents deserve nothing less than our full attention and energy. I want to express my deep gratitude to the residents of the Village of Oregon for the opportunity to serve over the two plus, past two-plus years. It's truly been an honor to be entrusted with this responsibility and to contribute to the future of this community we all care so much about. I also want to thank our incredible village staff. Your dedication, your professionalism and behind-the-scenes work are what keep everything moving forward. I've learned so much from you that I couldn't even begin to explain how much it's been and I've been consistently impressed by your commitment to serving our community well. And finally, thank you to my fellow board members. It has been a privilege to serve alongside you. I've appreciated the thoughtful discussions, the differing perspectives and the shared desire to do what's best for Oregon. and the shared desire to do what's best for Oregon. The board is in good hands and I'm confident in the leadership at this table. So thank you for all of your support and partnership during my time on the board.
Your voice will be missed, Jason. Okay. Eleven B, future agenda items. Tom?
I think probably need a future agenda item to discuss fulfilling the vacancy on the village board.
Yes, thanks.
And the role and the process that we'll use for that.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, item 12. Without objection, we are adjourned.